Preach at us.
Is it time, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, it's time.
Brother John, would you give us our afternoon prayer? And then I believe as a representative from the VFW here of the American Legion, would you give the stamp forward to give the pledge?
Father God, we've come before you today. We vow with humble hearts that you're the great provider. Your Son Jesus came to be a great unifier behind the good and just moral cause of your way. I pray for unity in our community. I pray that we bless this proceeding and that all decisions are made with your honor and glory in mind. We pray this in the name of your son, the great Savior, Jesus Christ.
Now the pledge. Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
The city treasurer Martin?
He's not here today.
Councillor Pulliam?
Here.
Councillor Taylor?
Here.
Councillor Harris?
Here.
Councillor McClendon?
Present.
Councillor Monday?
Here.
Councillor Holt?
Here.
Councillor Crew?
Here.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Here.
Councillor Robinson?
Present.
And Councillor Kat?
Here.
Got 10 out of 10 presentable.
We'll proceed with our meeting. First item on the agenda would be the minutes. Any additions or corrections?
Motion previous minute.
Second. All in favor by aye? Opposed, they are approved. Under old business, we have the next reading on three different ordinances. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the first title only?
An ordinance to rezone a 609.92 acre tract of land in the city of West Memphis located at approximately 1351 through 1983 North Airport Road from I-1 Limited Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development with industrial uses.
That concludes the second reading. Could I have a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the third? So moved.
Second.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance to rezone a 609.92 acre tract of land in the city of West Memphis located at approximately 1351 through 1983 North Airport Road from I-1 Limited Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development with industrial uses.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Shall the ordinance pass?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, it is carried. Would you give that ordinance a number, Mr. Clerk?
The ordinance number 2473.
I don't believe there's an emergency clause on it, is it, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Moving on, would you read the title to the next ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning ordinance 1988 as amended. Article 2, Section 1, zoning districts established, adding I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing District. Article 3, Section 3, industrial districts. Paragraph A, general description, adding number 1B, I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing. Paragraph B, permitted uses, and paragraph C, lot, yard, and height regulations.
Is that the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion in second to suspend the rules and place it on the third? Had a motion in second. All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning ordinance 1988 as amended. Article 2, Section 1, zoning districts established, adding I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing District. Article 3, Section 3, industrial districts. Paragraph A, general description, adding number 1B, I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing. Paragraph B, permitted uses, and paragraph C, lot, yard, and height regulations.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion in second to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, could you just explain, I'm just saying, you're the city attorney, why, I mean, we wait, you know, reading on that?
Philip. Philip.
No, I just wanted to explain, you know, to the audience of it, so they can understand just why.
Sure. Well, you can pass it two different ways. You can read it out over three meetings, or you can read them all at once, and it's just as legal. And...
Your readers provide some definition of...
No, what I was just wanting to let the audience know, I mean, in reading that, I mean, if we'd read the whole thing out, how much of a tongue...
I'd be happy to say why we don't do that. Mr. Pulliam, is always his job, it seems, to help me not to read the entire ordinance. And so by reading title only, it saves me reading the whole thing, and also saves everybody in the audience from hearing me read the whole thing. So, thank you again.
Do we have a motion in a second on the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor by, this is to pass the ordinance. All in favor by aye? Opposed, it is passed. Would you give it a number, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, the ordinance number 2474.
Moving on, the third ordinance, for the second and third time.
An ordinance to rezone certain property in the city of West Memphis located east of AR-147 Highway, north of Interstate 40, and south of AR-218 Highway, from R-1 Single Family District, C-2 Open Display Commercial District, and CV Conservation District to I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing.
That concludes the second reading. Could I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and place it on this third reading?
So moved. Second.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance to rezone certain property in the city of West Memphis located east of AR-147 Highway, north of Interstate 40, and south of AR-218 Highway, from R-1 Single Family District, C-2 Open Display Commercial District, and CV Conservation District to I-1M Limited Industrial Manufacturing.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, that passes. Would you give it a number, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, the ordinance number 2475.
That concludes the items of old business. Move on into new business.
And make a motion to read R-1 and O-1 by title only. Second.
Motion in second to read title only. All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed? And for the audience's sake, you had asked, Mr. Pulliam, now the audience has increased some.
Yep.
There are two ways we can pass an item of an ordinance. It has to be read three times. We can elect to do that all at one meeting and read it three times, or we can spread it out over three meetings. We choose most of the time just to read the title and read them out unless they're controversial. Then we spread them out over three months. Mr. Pulliam had asked that that be explained.
Thank you again, Mr. Pulliam. A resolution approving the selection of an architectural firm to provide design services required to prepare plans, specifications, and bid documents to assist with the proposed remodeling and to provide typical construction administrative services for Tilden Rogers Park and for other purposes.
Could I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, it is passed. Would you give this resolution a number?
The resolution number 2169.
Next item on the agenda, the title, would you read the title of this one, Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Could I have a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, would you read it for the second time?
An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
That concludes the second reading. And I have a motion to suspend the rule and place it on this third reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
That concludes the third and the final reading? No.
Yes, we have an emergency clause.
We have an emergency clause on it.
Section 5.
Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Clerk? Second.
I want to question that.
If allowed. I would like to make the motion that we approve the ordinance on this third and final reading.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, it is approved. Would you give it a number?
It's gone now.
The ordinance number 2.
I wish you would explain that.
Yeah, city attorney, city attorney needs to explain to the audience what we're talking about here.
Just a second, this is resolution, oh, ordinance number 2476. Since we just passed it, you want to do the emergency clause?
Do the emergency clause. Could I have a motion to approve emergency, what section is that?
Section 5.
Section 5. Need a motion in a second.
We were ahead. Wayne had second.
You got your motion and your second?
Yes, sir.
You got them, Cindy?
Yes, sir.
All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, then it is approved.
And we were going to have the city attorney kind of explain to the audience, they might find this interesting.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, this has been an ongoing thing for the last year. It predated my time in office when the, there have been lawsuits filed about persons who are soliciting, typically these are the panhandlers that have had other cities been sued because they've arrested people for violating this particular ordinance. And back when David Peoples was city attorney, he went to the municipal league in June, I think of last year, and he was told that they were targeting the West Memphis ordinance as the next one that they were going to file suit on. So he came back after the municipal league meeting and had an ordinance drafted which placed a moratorium on the enforcement of this ordinance, so it wouldn't be enforced and the city wouldn't be sued. There is pending litigation right now in court in Arkansas where the Hot Springs, the city of Hot Springs passed an ordinance mainly dealing with traffic issues about people getting into the street and trying to collect money and trying to avoid having accidents and things like that. That is, the ordinance is being litigated right now, not the ordinance that we have in effect, and we're waiting to find out what happens with that litigation before we do anything with this particular ordinance, whether that be enforce it, repeal it, and replace it, or whatever the case may be. So this is a moratorium for another six months to find out if in fact what's going to happen with that litigation.
Thank you.
That concludes...
I have a question on that. Now, the one that we just passed has nothing to do with the people standing on the service roads and all that. They can still be out there, am I right?
Sure.
It's just people in the neighborhoods can't do it in the neighborhood.
Well, that's right. And, you know, the intention is to not arrest people who have the freedom of speech is what they're litigating about, whether it's a free speech right or not, to be out in an intersection basically, putting out the message and trying to get money for it. So we're preventing that enforcement of those people being arrested until we determine what ordinance may pass constitutional standards.
But on the other hand, if you've got somebody walking in your neighborhood...
Well, it covers that too. This is the same thing.
That's illegal to solicit at your door.
Well, we're not enforcing the ordinance about that.
I understand.
Right.
So it's not illegal if you're not enforcing it.
Any other questions? Moving on, we have passed that with the emergency clause, so it's in effect immediately. Moving on, on the next page, you've got under permission request. First one is to sign a contract, I need permission to sign a contract between the fire department and a collection agency to handle a collection primarily on ambulance bills.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second to allow me to sign the contract. All in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, I will sign it. The next item was a permission request that I'm going to ask that you table indefinitely.
Make the motion, we table indefinitely.
Second.
Motion table indefinitely, all in favor by aye? Aye. Opposed, it is table indefinitely. It will come back up in the form of an ordinance at a later date. Moving on, in committee reports, I know the airport's had a meeting.
Yes, sir. Mayor Johnson, the airport commission met this morning. A few things discussed was the airport has been notified by FFA that there are two trees rising the minimum by 20 feet. The commission decided to add this to the CIP to try and get reimbursement for the removal of the trees through a grant. After looking at the cost estimates for water service options to get the restrooms and hangar four repaired, the commission requested to get someone from the utility department to come to the next commission meeting to clarify, to give a little bit of clarity on that project they're trying to get, the utility to try to help them out to get water for that restroom. I think that Alderman Crew may have talked about some months ago, and they're working on getting that repaired, but in the process of working on getting that repaired, they're running into quite a few obstructions as far as getting the water line ran, so we don't know exactly how long it's going to take to get all of that done. So at the next meeting next month, we should have a representative from the utility department to come and give us a little bit of clarity on how we can go about getting that rectified.
It would be good if we could get that rectified.
That ends my report.
Thank you. I believe that's the only one that I was given in pre-council, is that the only report we have that's going to be given today?
The utility commission met, but I do not have the report with me, so I'll have to give it next meeting.
Okay. Tracy?
I always, Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could ask the fire department personnel service of equipment that was recently purchased, that's going to be a great asset to the city, and it's definitely going to be a great asset to anyone that's in a accident. This equipment is going to give them a great deal of flexibility to react to situations for previous equipment, much more bulky, retired or required an energy source. They can respond quicker with this equipment, and it's just as capable of doing the job as the previous equipment was. I'll turn it over to Chief Jones.
Good afternoon, Assistant Chief Jones, West Memphis Fire Department. What we're going to look at today is some new equipment that was purchased with Act 833 funds, it's sort of a grant funding that the fire department receives, that all fire departments across the state receive. This particular equipment we're very proud of. It gives us some abilities that we did not have. As you know, we go out on a lot of wrecks, especially on the interstates, and one of our worst ones we do is usually on the bridge. And I know everybody in this room's been bottled up in traffic on that bridge at one time. Our fire trucks and rescue trucks, we get bottled up in that same traffic sometimes. And sometimes the wrecks are really horrendous, and you have to go up and cut people out of vehicles. Everybody's heard of the Jaws of Life. Well, the Jaws of Life's a big piece of equipment that hooks to a hydraulic machine, a pump that has to be run, so you're talking several pounds and lots of equipment that you have to carry if we get stuck in traffic. I noted to the fire commission when we were talking about this, that we almost walked about a mile up to the top of the bridge when they had to cut some out of car, and we had to carry all this equipment up there. Well, now they've come out with this new battery-powered equipment, we waited a year before we actually made a purchase of any of it, just to make sure all the bugs worked out. But the same equipment that we use is made by Amicus, and Amicus come out with this battery-powered equipment, enables us to carry just this one piece of equipment instead of all the rest of that stuff. So if we have to get up to a wreck scene like that, we can travel much quicker, much lighter, and we still do the same job. And what's really neat about this equipment is the battery on this thing. It's made by DeWalt. DeWalt is a name brand that you can buy at any hardware store. These batteries can be bought at any hardware store. You can actually take this battery off and run in a saw that Lieutenant Thornmere has that you can buy at Home Depot or one of our hardware stores here in town. In fact, that saw right there comes from a hardware store over on Seven Street. So, real big, real big for us. Equipment's real quiet. Usually when you're at a wreck scene, it's real noisy, real loud, and, you know, you're already scared to death, it's already one of the worst days of your life. Now we can operate this equipment, and we can talk to you and hear you, so we can calm you down, tell you what's going on. In fact, show them how loud the equipment is, it's not bad at all.
My weed eater makes more noise than that.
And Lieutenant Thornmere, I know you've seen our equipment firsthand when we did prom promise.
Yes.
For us to have something like this, we're the only fire department in the city right now.
I hadn't thought about that.
So we're very blessed in West Memphis to have such things as this, and the great guys that can work this stuff. So we wanted to come show it to you, show you what we do, show you some of our nice equipment, and thank the council and all the citizens of West Memphis for letting us do things like this.
So that is, that is the Jaws of Life, is that, or similar to it?
This one out here is actually called a cutter. The big one that Josh has there?
Uh-huh.
That's actually the Jaws of Life right there, because it opens up like a big upset of jaws.
Right.
And we use that machine right there to spread metal, like to push the, when a car gets in on you, we can push it off of it. This tool here that firefighter Carter Griffin has is the cutter. We can actually cut metals off. You've seen us take doors off cars, roofs off cars, I know you saw it firsthand. And that machine right there will cut just about any kind of metal that's out there right now on the market. These are the strongest tools you can get like this on the market right now.
Now, we have our leadership students here today. Of course, when I went through leadership, we had to do extensive exercises with the fire department, where they get firsthand experience with this equipment.
Now that we have this, I hope to give them firsthand experience.
Yeah, I'll do that.
We'll give them some other experiences, but we're going to try to include this in it too.
Can I come back just for a practice run?
Absolutely. Come right on down. We love to have you as a fire department. If anybody wants to come by and check out our equipment, our trucks, our meeting, guys, feel free to. All of our stations are always open, whether they're 24/7, 365. We'd love to see you come by and visit us.
Chief, if I may, when you switched this power source from what you previously had, was there any deviation from your abilities to...
Just slightly, but nothing, nothing that these tools can't handle. These tools aren't quite as strong as the ones that run off the gasoline motor, but they're right there in it. Like the tool that Josh has there in his hand, it can exert 60,000 pounds of force.
Well, when you did your testing, you went through several vehicles before you actually ran the battery down.
Yes, sir. We brought a vehicle up, the man brought the tools out, and my biggest concern with these is, well, we'd be able to get somebody cut out of a car before that battery goes dead. And we cut this car on pieces, in fact, it didn't resemble a car at all when we got done, because after we did the normal things we did to it, we kept trying to run the battery down. So I kept trying to find the thickest pieces of metal on this car to cut, and we just, we cut away, and we finally ran it down after this car was just shredded. And then the gentleman there, you know, showed us the tools. My biggest fear was that tool would be stuck in there, because maybe if we didn't have another battery. And he showed me that we could power them on and off and just back the tool right out. So that was one of the things that sold us on these tools. But really nice equipment, and we feel very blessed to have them.
Jim, is there anything else in your plans that's maybe advanced in this area?
There's, they make one more piece of equipment, and we actually got to use these tools Sunday on AFCO Road. We had two cars hit head-on at the rebel tracks, and we wound up, we used both these tools, but we had to fire up our gasoline-powered tools too, because they make something that's called a ram, it pushes, it pushes in a straight line, and we had to use our gasoline-powered one because the person was pinned under the dash, and we had to push the dash up off of them. After we cut the roof off and the doors and stuff to get in there through that person, we still had to push the dash up off of them, so. But yeah, I'd like to see us maybe purchase that piece of equipment later on down the road, so. We purchased the most necessary which right now.
What did these cost, just out of curiosity?
Out of curiosity, these things ran $18,000 for these two pieces of equipment.
And it's out of specially designated funds?
Yes, sir, it's out of the Act 833 funds, which is insurance turnback money the state gets that filters down to all the fire departments. So with that type of money, we're able to buy specialized pieces of equipment like this.
If it comes down to saving a life, the money really doesn't matter.
That's right. You can't put a price tag to somebody's lives.
That's right.
Absolutely. But thank you all very much for letting us come and show you these tools.
Now you see why we have a class one for our fire department.
Amen.
Women and personnel, we're blessed.
Thank you.
And like I said, any time y'all want to come by, I'll bring you there and just let you in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I think that concludes the committee reports, and as usual, Lorraine has gotten in ahead of me, and taking part of my program, I was going to recognize the leadership class, and she's already recognized them.
Because that's my heart.
Mayor, I know we threw with the reports, but I want to make an announcement to the police commission. I'm going to try to have a call meeting soon with our chief and Scott Ellerton, prosecutor, and the judge. We're going to try to get a coordinated meeting with all of us together. We have an issue with this crime we have here in the town, and the police is doing a good job of apprehending them, but then when they get to the court system, they let them out on bond. I mean, people did drive-by shootings, and we need to get together so we can come together and try to do something about that. We have a big, big issue, and at our next commission meeting, we're going to ask the chief to get Scott Ellerton down here and get our judge, and get all of us together so we can try to curtail this. Thank you.
Sounds good. And we do welcome the leadership group. It's always a pleasure to have you here, and you will see some things and learn how government works and how it doesn't work sometime. We were very fortunate, they everything worked. But it's good to have you. We have some council members that are graduates of the leadership group, I believe, what, at least two, sitting, three?
I was in the first leadership group.
You were?
By definition, the number one group.
No, I was in the second, and we will always be number one.
I was, I was in with the Lorraine in the second group in 90, what, Lorraine, seven? 98?
Don't be trying to tell people how old I am.
She doesn't want to tell her age.
98.
Right, if it was 98. And we also went through Arkansas Chamber of Commerce as well.
Yeah, we went through Leadership Arkansas together also.
It's good to have you here, and hope some of you will get interested in government because it's rewarding, has its good moments and bad moments, but the good far outdoes the bad moments that we have. And moving on, we have to move into our citizen's request portion of our...
I had an...
Do you have an announcement?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to be sure the public knows that 16 members of the Arkansas, the West Memphis Council or department heads attended Arkansas Municipal League last week. Again, I think for the third year in a row, we've had the largest delegation, and we'll recognize for that. And for the public's information, that gives us an opportunity for continuing education on legal issues, economic development, code enforcement, and then it also gives us an opportunity to see vendors that are available to us to provide services to the community.
Freedom Fest?
And Freedom Fest is next Friday from 5 to 9 at Tilden Rogers Park. Fireworks will be at 9. Fireworks will be at 9. Come out and enjoy the hard work the Convention and Visitors Bureau does putting this on.
And I have one announcement. Don't forget, in the morning, I'm sorry, Saturday morning, our big West Memphis cleanup list will take place. I'm thankful to the Lord, I know we needed the rain, and I asked him to please let it dry up a little bit Saturday morning so we can go ahead and get our list done. And if any of you leadership members would like to come out, we are going to register here at City Hall, 8 o'clock Saturday morning. It's from 8 until 12, but once you finish your assignment, if you want to go home, you're welcome to do that if you finish before 12. And if you don't want to go, you can come back and enjoy the activities and the refreshments with us. God be willing, the weather holds up. But I pray that we can at least get going Saturday morning to work on cleaning our city up.
Philip, ask me, then you.
Just want to remind everybody that Business After Hours with the Chamber is tonight, is tonight on the North Campus of ASU Mid-South. We're having it in our, it's the Delta Cuisine, the Kitchen and Incubator Project that we had the grant for from the city that is being administered by John Alker out there. We're having an open house there. It's really a cool facility. If you hadn't been out there, all the leadership group, come out at 5, you'll be through, you ought to stay together, come on out there. Have really good food and beverages, and going to have tours of the kitchen facilities. We've got three or four folks that I can name that are using the Kitchen Incubator. They're doing a lot of business and doing things, and some of them will be there with some of their wearers, too. So it's tonight from 5 to 7. Invite you all to come.
Okay. Melvin?
Two things real quickly. Attorney Stevenson?
Yes.
I just wanted to say to you, a lot of times people, and I'll be real quick, two things. A lot of times, the public, people don't know what you all go through behind the scenes. Yesterday, I witnessed a situation, and let me be honest, let's just rewind 30 minutes ago, just erase 30 minutes ago, me, 30 minutes ago.
Sure.
But the humility and professionalism that you show, it taught me. My parents, both of my parents, retired educators here in West Memphis. My dad grew up poor, pretty much farming, but he never used his circumstances as an excuse. He grew up in the hidden area of, I would say, segregation, both my parents, but they never taught me hate for any black or white situation. But anyway, yesterday was not a black thing, it was not a white thing, it was a humiliating thing, and you taught me how I should respond. Rewind it back, erase 30 minutes ago.
I'm not worried about 30 minutes ago. Thank you.
I will carry that with me, and it meant a lot. We wanted to also announce that the 15-year-old child that was killed several weeks or so ago, the city of West Memphis, we give our condolences. The mother, I went to school with the mother, the family, the family was a great instrument in my campaign when I ran for council. A lot of us know that family, I think the Pokes are the grandparents. So that baby's funeral will be Saturday, this Saturday, but we did want to just give our condolences on behalf of the city of West Memphis. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pulliam?
I just want to make a statement. I guess on the cleanup list, we look forward to seeing all the meritorious candidates, leadership group. We look forward to seeing you all Saturday. You can sign up with Ms. Robinson before you leave here today.
Look how you look today. Look how you look today.
Now, I'm coming back to our agenda for our citizen's request. We have a lady with the Division of Services for the Blind. Are you here? Come forward to the microphone, give your name and address and your request. We traditionally allow about five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Laster. I work at 401 South College, Tullawood, the DHS building, Division of Services for the Blind, and I was just wanting to share with you all some of the services that we offer that you may not be aware of. Division of Services for the Blind, we have 10 offices across the state of Arkansas, and our main goal is to keep the economic independence of the people who may be experiencing problems with their eyes. Not just people who are totally blind, but we work with individuals who are legally blind and low vision, and we provide services that would be able to enhance their vision through assistive technology that they may need on their jobs as they're working, with the main goal being to keep them employed in their jobs. And we also work with individuals who would like to be employed with the requirements being at least 20 hours a week. The requirements in terms of eligibility starts with 20, 50, and above, or anything that is of a degenerative nature, for example, cataracts, glaucoma, macular degeneration, keratomas, anything that can rob the individual of their eyesight. And again, we provide the assistive technology that they may be in need of at their jobs, and all of our services, beginning even with the first appointment to go to the eye doctor to determine eligibility, is at no cost to the consumer. Any questions?
Did you have one of these brochures for each one of us? I think you're forgiven, Margaret. Do you have others to pass out?
You're welcome. I do have some that I could leave.
Do you have any cards?
The number that would need to get called is on the front of the brochure.
Oh, okay, okay.
And also, out at the front, when you come in, there's a flyer that's up there that Ms. Taylor had put up last week, week before last, when I was up here.
Thank you.
I'd like to testify for you, if I can. When I was with the Health Department a number of years ago, I worked with your department. There was a young man from West Memphis who was blind, and was doing a job of timing, and he worked at another department. We all provided a grail machine, and we translated health education materials into grail to give out to other individuals who were blind who saw, have the problem. So it was a wonderful experience getting to know people in his family, so thank you for everything you all did.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your presentation.